You guys hear me? Oh, you're muted, okay. Okay, thanks. Your end is muted, but that's fine. No worries.
Does anyone else log in to the Zoom?
Are you logged in yet?
I was just gonna log in and just so I can see faces.
Make sure you're muted.
Yep, I was gonna mute. Let's see, there we go.
Rick? You here?
Yeah.
Allison?
Present.
Dana Claire?
Here.
Here.
Matt Warwick?
Yeah.
Alex Riewold?
Here.
Ted Zissler?
Here, thank you.
All right, we have everybody, thank you. Okay, guys, thanks for the special Bike Ped Trails Commission, the second one for May. And it's really, the item on the agenda is to discuss the draft map report. Just a couple of quick things before we get into that. On Monday, as you guys know, we have the bike rodeo where we're gonna give away some bikes. And starts at four. We're gonna try to get the bikes over by three thirty. Who knows, they're gonna be there. You cannot, yeah, you're gonna be out of town. So Ted, Alec and I are gonna be there. Michael, you'll be able to be there.
Yeah, and I'm supposed to bring a bike too.
Yeah, unless you're gonna keep it. It's a pink one, I know it's.
Really fun size.
Ally or David, do you know if you guys will be there at all?
And I'm sorry, what day was this?
It's on Monday. This coming Monday from four to six behind the rec center, in the parking lot.
I won't that, I'll be in El Salvador.
Yeah, that's right, okay. Well, we have, we have plenty of coverage, just we're gonna have three or four of us there. And we found out that I've never been to one of these, but kids gotta come do the rodeo on leave. So we're gonna set it up so they don't have to be present to get a bike, they can register and redraw their name, they'll get, we'll figure out how to get it to them. Okay, and then one last thing before we start the meeting, I have a question for you guys. I was talking to Nikki of Age Friendly and I told her I'd give her any feedback you guys might have from the presentation they gave. Too long, too short, anything you'd spend more time on, just write. What do you guys think? Anybody?
They did a great job.
You liked it, yeah.
Yeah, switched it up with different presenters. Content was great, informative, tons of work they did.
Yeah, I think there was some discussions whether or not they should have spent more time on the recommendations.
Yeah, maybe, and a little bit more on like an ask. To what, like, more specific asks for us.
Ah, yeah. Okay. I had a conversation with several of them and, and I think what I was hearing was maybe they should have spent more time on outcomes. Because I think people were probably there to hear that outcome, what was gonna be recommended, as opposed to the process. Yeah. And I think, I think they got that, I think they agreed that they probably would need to shorten up the subs part and the outcome part, you know, what are we recommending specifically to people? Yeah, and I just, Nikki and I were having that same conversation, I just thought I'd give some feedback from you guys if you had any. So, if you have any after this meeting, just email me and I'll pass it along to them. And so I think the way to start this discussion about the draft is just go around each of you and, you know, give me a minute or whatever you got on, on your impressions of the draft. Before we go, anybody wanted to start that discussion? Michael?
Yeah, mine will be pretty basic. I mean, I, mine's probably more kind of centered on the, the write-up that you guys did.
Right.
And maybe some comments there, but maybe I'll just leave it at that, if anything else comes up.
Hey, David or Ally, one of you guys, comments on the draft, your review of the draft?
Well, for myself, I did not spend enough time to look at it to, to know. I mean, it looks kinda similar to what we saw before, really. And yeah, I'd, I'd rather put more comments than where to go from there, but I haven't looked at it detailed enough.
Right, okay. Ally, what about you?
So, in reference to the map draft or the map, or the draft you guys said?
No, the map draft, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it was definitely some boilerplate. I do like, you know, I like the recommendations, I'm not gonna poo-poo their recommendations, but I do think I mean, how close are we to getting like cost estimates? How close are we to like having actual recommendations for projects? It's seemed a lot more focused on ideas and getting them to implementation is like gonna be a whole nother lift.
I'm sorry, what was she saying? How close are we to what?
In terms of, yeah. In terms of having like comprehensive projects to put together, and it really comes off the report like it's a a list of ideas that are cool to do and they're prioritized in places and it's definitely a good way to imagine things, but when we talk about trying to propose these ideas and implement them, you know, where, I think maybe this is on us more than it's on me. The more I think about it, maybe it's on us to put together a prioritized list and get, you know, cost estimates. I mean, they just had, all I saw were dollar signs, like one through four dollar signs. And I'm really curious, like, what is one dollar sign? What is two dollars?
Yeah. Okay, thanks. Yeah. Alex, what do you got?
I do like that they've added a section around the network vision. However, I do think it lacks anything past what we've already seen between the multimodal corridor, say routes to schools and yes, the projects that they recommend are kind of within those areas, however, I don't see how it creates that network still past just being, okay, here's raised. You know, crosswalks here, here's a bump out here, and I wanted more within that network to be like, okay, here's where we how we actually get bikes onto the roads, like, and then things like that. And how we move cars off the, off those roads to a degree or make it more safe for cars to be on the roads with other things. That was the biggest area I thought was lacking. I did like that they added in a Vision Zero section and are recommending that. I think that that's a step in the right direction. I don't know if it's where we want to be final, whether it's complete streets or the inverted pyramid hierarchy. And I think, what's my last note? You guys might have touched on it also, so maybe we can kind of skip that, but, but the network, I'm still not fully grasping it has a list of projects and how it actually brings together the implications of what those projects would do.
Okay. Yeah.
Yeah, I, I don't even know as far as the network, if it's even advanced us past what was proposed years and years and years ago in a map. I mean, it's the same thing.
Yeah. That, that was the takeaway I had, was it, it kind, it kind of reused language that we've already established, whether it be in the comp plan or the comp plan, so.
Okay. Okay, Ted, you got anything for us? Did you have a chance to look it over?
Well, I mean, I have the same kinds of questions. The, I think the biggest question that I had was I didn't exactly understand your expectations of what you wanted in this report that you put into five pages of critiquing of what's, everything that's missing. I'm not sure to me, the, the comments of what's missing are, seem to be almost as generalized as their comments for fixing things, except I think the, I think the big disappointment perhaps is that mo-most of their comments for recommendations for fixes were the same kinds of things that we talked about regarding 133. And I think what you're looking for is a more comprehensive thing that includes the whole town, not just fixing critical issues on 133. I think that's where you wanna be going.
Well, I'm not sure that I- To be, to be clear, I wanna stop here for a second, to be clear, this is not where I wanna go. It's, it's not about what I want, it's about what the commission wants. And so which is why I'm starting this discussion, asking you guys what you think of the report, right? And so I and I, and I think the idea is that we presented on, and we said that this commission spent a lot of time drafting the RFP and, and the concepts that I think we're looking for, that Rick and I offered up in that outline, were largely taken from the RFP, so I, I believe the genesis of all this discussion is that. In, in the work that we did since the RFP was issued and we tried to grapple with this last fall and winter about what we hoped would, would come out of it. So, I, I just wanna, you know, I wanna be careful with how you're, you're talking about the, the, where this is going and what's driving it.
Yeah.
And it's good for all of you guys to know, this is our process, right? Yeah.
I think it's good, on your question, on your comment about some of our suggesting being general, we, we are not the consultant, we are not experts on this. We don't know how to do a five, ten, fifteen year outlook. That was what we expected them to do. If we can do it ourselves, we do it ourselves, but they will not be experts there. We are the experts about issues here in Harbin, yeah, but we're not the experts about how to develop a, a long-term, five, ten, seventeen year outlook, as an example.
Yeah, and so like regarding that, my question was, how deeply did the consultants dig in to what our five or ten or fifteen year growth plan is for the, for the community?
So your, I mean, your observation would be they didn't really tackle growth, is that a fair?
Well, besides, I mean, outside of the surveys that were done for 133 and the, and the survey that, the map survey that we did online, how, how much did they dig into, well, what are your plans for continued growth over the next ten or fifteen years?
Okay, I'd rather stay away from questions for Kevin at the moment, let's just, yeah, let's, let's just, I, I mean, we're gonna have a lot of questions for Kevin and the consultant. I mean, if, so rather, can you phrase that question as a comment? I mean, is your concern that, that growth isn't accounted for, without trying to put?
Well, I mean, that's what you just said, that they didn't seem to account for potential growth recommendations. How do we, how do we manage that adaptability for all potential growth? The question is, well, how much do they know about what our potential, what our plans for growth might be for the next few several years? What did we give them to, like, you know, have, allow them to, to make those kind of recommendations also?
Okay, so I don't know. But, okay. Hey, Rick, here.
Yeah, I think, I same question to you. For me, that was a big issue, not feeling, I didn't feel like I came away after reading it, knowing where we're gonna be beyond this first set of good. I mean, there's lots of good projects and, you know, some direction there for the immediate future, but I didn't come away feeling like I knew where we were gonna be in five years or what to do next. How to, so that I have a confidence that in five or ten years, we will have a roadmap that's really guiding us along, dealing with whatever comes up. To be prepared to grow in a manner that protects, you know, our culture here, and maybe takes people out of cars and actually improves our bike ped culture. So that, that seemed to be missing and I didn't feel like the goals that they outlined in, the actual goals that they outlined in the draft were all addressed. We haven't even addressed all the goals that they identified. So it just seemed, there was a lot of things were missing, there were a lot of good things in there, but I didn't have confidence that this was gonna really prepare us to do anything different in the long term. And I don't know what the answer to that is, because I'm, you know, I've never, I haven't done this kind of work. But I was hoping he would, or they would, because they've done it all over the state. And they could share with us what other people have done and make some recommendations.
Yeah, listen, my sense was that what we were asking for was a plan, right? Which is, things like, words we use were interconnected, integrated, consistent design. Deal with growth, you know, growth that's happened and how it's impacted our town already, how we fix those impacts. You know, how we, how we look to the future as we continue to grow. And deal with it as a complete unit. And I feel what we got was a list of projects and a toolkit that quite honestly doesn't, to me, add a lot of value to the, the town's goals of achieving a more multimodal bike-friendly community. I think the list of projects is probably something that if we gotta group together and walked around, we could come up with, we know the town better than they do, and, and, you know, the tools are type in a search on the internet and you get every one of them, which is, I think, is what Age Friendly found out. So what they gave us, I think, is something we could have done, and all the things that are missing are things that we were hoping for expertise to provide. That's kind of, I guess, what I see and why I'm disappointed with it. And
One thing I, I've noticed, if you go to, like, when we first started looking at complete streets and and programs like that, when we looked at like the town of Frisco, whoever did their program, when they created their toolkit or whatever it was, they had a second round of public engagement where they said, hey, on this street, we can make it, you know, parking like this, bike lane like this, walking like this, and they gave actual graphics for people to kind of say, this, this will work, this wouldn't work. And I was kind of curious if that was the next step in this process, now that we have something like this, if there's a bit more of a visualization, another round of public engagement that would give people that more tangible feeling as to say like, we know the town, kind of like what we've seen with Age Friendly, you know, we've walked quite a bit, we know the town. What you recommended here makes no sense, but it might over, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
So, that was one thing I was curious might come. Yeah, like kind of what we, we did a little bit, the other, the other consultants did that a little bit on Eighth Street, kind of put some design shirats out for the community to comment on. Yeah. But yeah, now we have this toolkit.
Right. Well, I, I'm sorry, and were you guys here to listen to this discussion? Yeah. Okay.
To me, I felt like the toolkit that they provided regarding specific intersections potentially might give clout coming from them as experts. If we take it upon ourselves to prioritize what are the issues that we think need to be fixed first in, in the sequel, develop a sequel, us develop the sequence of what should be fixed, and now you've got a set of things to start with. I mean, there, I think there's plenty of time potentially to generate the, the global plan. Because getting to the fix for each specific area, wherever it happens to be, whether it's in town or wherever, those things are gonna take time also. And so there's, there's, I think the, the concept of developing the global plan that you want to see developed, that builds in the future planning is, there's time for, for that to, to be developed, but at least now, we've got tools from an official recognized authority that says, these are the best ways to fix these particular situations. And let's start prioritizing now what things do you want fixed. I don't, the concept of having a unified unified my sense was that you're talking about appearance, things should look the same all around town for whatever things, things should be implemented. I mean, they're all gonna have to be customized to the specific location, and I'm not sure to what extent having everything look the same is gonna be possible or feasible. I, I don't know, but maybe you've got better ideas about that.
Yeah, just on that note, I think it's not necessarily like, oh, everything must exactly look the same. Of course, like different intersections have different contexts. But if you are, if you're walking, or if you're biking, you should kind of know, hey, this is a safe corridor for me to be on. I should, you know, like, I feel good here, I feel safe here.
True.
I mean, cars should also know, hey, like, this is a multimodal corridor. Like, I should also maybe check my speed, watch out for pedestrians, bikes, things like that.
Sure.
And I think that was more what that network vision was kind of creating right now. The multimodal corridor, you don't get that sense, you don't get that feeling that it's any different than any other street in town. So I think that was kind of the feeling, and, and I do think some of the recommendations in the toolkit will, will get us to a place where you kind of feel that, but I still didn't feel like it's still kind of tied it all together in a manner.
Yeah, I, I appreciate your comment, Ted, about, at least we got something, so we're gonna, I guess for me, the plan comes first, because if you start doing things with your streets, other things are gonna happen and you have to kind of understand what's gonna happen, for one, like, you know, there was a discussion tonight about putting all the stop signs on Main Street, and I think the recommendations from MAP were, you know, do some common traffic coming on Main. Well, you know, cars are gonna spill somewhere else. You know, they get frustrated with Main Street, they'll go up to Glitter Garfield and you know, this report acknowledged that. They said, oh yeah, you know, if you do something that might happen, but they didn't build that concept into the plan. They didn't say like, we made these five recommendations and because of those recommendations, you implement them, this might happen and you should be ready for that.
Right.
So for me, it's hard to go through a, a bunch of work items without understanding how they all fit into the whole. And I think there's some things that, again, this is not me, I mean, the town has been saying for a long time, they want to make it safe and comfortable for bikes and pedestrians. And this plan doesn't, it does it, you know, in a few places, but it doesn't do it everywhere, and it doesn't make that a priority or the goal, right? To me, in my mind. And you know, if, if you wanna lay out a meaningful bike and pedestrian system, it seems to me that's what you should lay out first rather than fixing a few intersections, right? And but I really wanna hear from you guys because and, and if we're not ready tonight, if you guys need more time to dig into the plan, then we'll postpone this meeting, we'll do it again, because I, I need you guys to read the plan and come back to the table and, and agree or disagree, because I don't want this to be Matt Warwick driving a program. And my kind of sense is you guys haven't really had a chance to dig into the plan yet, and we should, we should reconvene. And, and it's okay, I mean, if that's the, the case, tell me, and we'll reconvene in ten days or something, but I'd, I'd rather have that conversation where we've all read the plan and we're not just reading an outline that I put together saying this is what, where it missed, right?
I've read the plan in detail a couple of times.
What's that?
I've read the plan and I've gone through it several times.
Yeah. I mean, if you sit down with the RFP, or this commission did.
Yeah.
And then you sit down with the plan and you spend an hour, you'll form an opinion. But I need you to have an opinion when you, on this topic, because it's a big deal for the town. And we spent a lot of time and money and effort and the, the commission's going to make a recommendation. I, I need to have a commission at the table.
So my question, my question is the community indicated that they would like to see something happen ASAP. And so what's wrong with the concept of starting to implement temporary, short, you know, fixes for the things that people see as the big safety items? That they want to hurry up and get, see something fixed, at least put something temporary in place while we're continuing this process. Because I mean, this may, I hate to, to feel like, well, we're, we're looking for an answer, but we don't have it yet. We're going to push it down the road. We're looking for an answer and we don't have it yet. We're going to push it down the road again. We're going to keep kicking the bucket down the road, but, and nothing's going to happen. At least if, if we start thinking about, well, what is the most significant safety issues? And start to implement some, at least things that are low cost, inexpensive, safety mission, issues that we can, that we can implement now while we're working on.
Ted, I've got no problem with that.
Yeah.
But that's not what we're talking about. We're talking about trying to see whether or not the plan that we've engaged with a consultant to draft for us helps us get where we want to go. And I'm, I'm, I'm all for making things safer yesterday. But I think this is a different conversation.
I'm not sure we have an unlimited amount of time with the consultant to continue this process. My feeling is that Kevin, you can weigh in if we're on the wrong, but we don't have an unlimited amount of time. I mean, we have a, we need to get this done because we have a contract with somebody who's working on it. We can't drag it on and putting off
So what I would say to that, if it's okay. Is we can take as much time as we need to get this where we want it to be. With the understanding that there are going to be some budget limitations. And, and just for example, like if you want them to do a traffic model of the entire town and then swap in five or six different improvements and see what that does, that's going to have to go back to the board of trustees. That's a hundred, hundred and fifty thousand dollar addition to this. If we want to take a few more months and a few more hours, that's not a big deal. So I would, I would encourage you to think of it from not, we're in a time crunch. But just get it to where it needs to be.
Right. Well, thanks.
I just wanted to say, I, well, first I gotta agree that maybe I won't have a very good interpretation and opinion on the plan until the 20, after the 20th, just purely for time reasons. But it sounds like what you want is a yellow brick, yellow brick road and like a map on how to get a holistic view of what you want. But what we got was like a, a buffet, you know, there's a bunch of options here. And so I think it is kind of a different plan than what you, it seems like you want. And something to implement is something more of a yellow brick road than a buffet. And so I have to agree though, that there, last time I was at the meeting, when we were at the meeting, I wrote down a temporary, like test pilot, cheap things we could do. And that is like a way to kind of stave off some of the public opinion that's, we're not doing anything. But I do think what you're looking for is, is not coming out of this in the next month, you know? This is, this is a yellow brick road that we're going to get to.
Well, you know, I, I think just because I'm uncomfortable with where we're at as a group, what I'd like to do is I get a commitment from everybody on the commission to spend an hour with the RFP. Then I, I know not everybody on the commission now was here when we drafted it. But I think you, Michael, me, regardless, it came from the commission. And spend a little time with that to refresh your memory of, and inform your thoughts around that as to what concepts were in there. And you know, again, the RFP was a process where we didn't want to lay things out. Right? We wanted to give some guidance so the, the consultant could then interpret it. So it, it might not, it's not going to be a list, a to-do list of things, it's concepts. But I'd like you to spend some time with that and, and commit a, a half hour to an hour with the report. And then when we've all done that, we're ready, let's come back and have another conversation.
I see David, you've got your hand up.
Yeah, two things. One, I gotta go. Number two, I do agree that it would be great to spend more time with it. But just from what I've been hearing from a number of us, including myself, I think it is true that this is like the beginning and what we're missing is the second half. That is like the true vision. You know, what, what are we doing now? What do we see in five years? What do we see in 10 years? And starting to propose this so you can kind of see it and truly start to really have the town realize that these are special corridors. And that is the direction we're going, you know, try to get some signs and over time, those implementations will happen. And as Ted said, yeah, there's nothing wrong with picking the low hanging fruit right away, but we should not let this consultant period expire without really having that future vision. I mean, this is a great opportunity and we, I, I, you know, just hearing other people, we want to at least see that vision and put some thought into like, you know, as this population increases, what are we doing? And take a best guess for how it's going to look. And when the time comes, we might change it, but at least we are saying, this is a direction we're going.
Go ahead. Well, I was just going to say, well said. I appreciate that. Yeah.
I think one thing, looking at the report and the toolbox and kind of how it feels like, like how I mentioned, like a, like a buffet. They clearly state the vision that I feel like we were pretty well aligned with at the start of the report, right? Like
The, what, the vision, right?
Yeah. Yeah. And, and we've got the goals behind it. And then you just get into this list of projects. And one thing I've done this when I go through work, that's like, okay, we've got this vision, strategy, all this stuff. It's like, how do you then tie each of those goals to each of those projects? In a manner like even literally just putting like the little icons. So I could say, okay, this one is for adaptability. This one is for safety. Cause right now they all feel weighted one, in one spot. And to the point of like, do they know what our growth plans are, things like that? It feels like that would clearly show where we're lacking all of that. And it would also bring it together in some sort like, give me that network.
If we had more connection to each stated goal.
Do we have more, do we have a concept for what the town's future plans are for growth and development?
Yeah, you know, I, I I'm not sure we need to, right? I, I, I mean, I, I think I have a little sense. And I, and I, I think how the town's been impacted in the last 10 years is almost as important as how it's going to be. To, when you start thinking about this, you know, the, the multimodal corridors were laid out 10 years ago, I think, roughly 10 years, no, eight. But a lot of growth in the last eight years. So those streets themselves aren't even the same streets. Yeah.
But so the problem is, is we're trying to weigh playing catch up against playing, against future expansion potential. And so how do you prioritize playing catch up with potentially future growth? I mean, and so much of these projects that are talked about there is all about playing catch up.
I, I agree. And, and I, I think what you're hitting on is an aspect of a plan. You know, that's, that could be addressed in a plan, right? So
Part of the issue is part of our decisions about what to fix now might impact what our future vision is, what we, what we think we, we need to look like in five years.
So we need to focus on.
No, we need the big, we need the whole picture. Cause what, what I want to do now will impact what happens or what this place looks like in five years. And we want to have to undo things we did not because we didn't have an idea of what we should look like, you know, we're going in five years. What I'm saying, one thing leads to another. So you got a plan, sort of lays it out and you make the proper decisions based on all the information.
So Mike, so that, I mean, I'm having difficulty, I think, conceptualizing the whole thing in terms of our relationship to planning for the town. And should we have a better handle? I don't see why. I mean, you said no. But what seems to me that if we want to ask the consultant to build that into the, to the, to this document, then we need to have a better concept of what are we asking for? And do we need to discuss that with whoever is involved with growth and development of the, of the community? And do we need to, would it be better for us, do we need to have ultimate unanimity among the group? Or just once we have a concept of what we really are thinking about in terms of where we, we're going to go in the future 10 or 15 years, to sit down with the consultant face to face, not have a, a Zoom presentation, but to sit down and be able to talk about where do we think if this document falls short, what do we want to have included in it? It's, I'm just posing that as a question.
Yeah, listen, I, I think it's one thing to, as members of the community who have experienced a growth and will expand to growth and have a sense of where it is. It's, it's one thing, I think, to be able to layer that in to a plan that deals with the future from a consultant who understands that traffic and growth in towns. Yeah, it, it's another to not have that plan to respond to in the first place. Right? And I think that's where we are now. It's like there, there really is no discussion of future growth in what we've been given. So, you know, I think there's a role for both, right? There's a role for us to say, well, we're worried about this section of town or this much, or we're worried about how many houses have already been built, you know? But it's not our job to lay out design options or design thoughts for that. Right? That's what the consultant shares. So makes sense? Yeah, Kevin.
When you're done, I just got a couple of things to maybe think about when you're reviewing this stuff.
Okay.
I think, I think for me, I, I thought that the consultant would give us analogies and say, you know, we did this plan in Frisco five years ago, we anticipated that they would grow. Here's what they did, here's how it worked out. He would, he would give us some history based on their experience that we can apply in this to us. We think we're going to grow. We know what size we are. We know the pressures. And, and this, we hired the big experience firm because we thought, or I thought, they'd have this experience to make these analogies for us, to make these comparisons to say, this is what we learned from this experience in Frisco, Thornton, or wherever in Colorado, that, that we dealt with this problem. So this is what we're recommending. We don't know for sure. Nobody knows for sure. I mean, but, but there's some analogies there based on experience.
I see.
So I formulated a little bit more of an overall response. But I, I do appreciate what's in the plan so far, like the toolkit and the vision and and the intro, intros to each section are starting to, they're starting to formalize our, what our concerns are in this group. And I think that's really nice to have in an official document that will outlast the members of this commission and the staff and everything moving forward for future, you know?
Am I getting fired?
I mean, like, then we're like way down the road. You know, when we're all gone, you know, the town has this toolkit that I think is a decent toolkit. And in the vision and, you know, just if, if, if some of this other stuff that we think is missing gets included, I think that's a really cool thing to have. I'm, I, I agree that I think we're all in agreement on what's missing is that kind of more holistic look like I was thinking more of like, you know, seeing a map. And we've got our priority corridors, but being able to have someone look at that map and saying, okay, these are your priority corridors, what's the most efficient way to move people around from this part of the map to that part of the map? And a little bit more holistic plan that I think we're all seeing as missing.
Yeah. And I agree, I struggle with that because we, we talk about wanting holistic plan. But you know, back in, you know, November and December, we had breakup groups who were trying to figure out, you know, okay, we said this in our RFP. What do, what do we want that to look like? You know, if you guys recall, we spent a lot of time trying to figure out what we would want it to look like so we could respond. And, you know, we did have some ideas, which Kevin just said, we'll never get money for. No, no, no. But the idea, look, look at the idea of mapping out options around town, it was just a brainstorming thing to try to drive the conversation to look at things holistically. You know, there's other ways of doing it. You know, one thing I thought of when I was looking at the to-do list is that it seems like we have a traffic calming problem everywhere, right? Like, you know, it's not a street in town that if you went and knocked on a couple of doors, people would say, people are going too fast. So to, to focus on a few kind of spots and fix those seems to be minimizing the problem. And what you might do is start with, let's come up with a traffic calming plan for the whole town. And then layer over intersection changes and other things, right? Why stop at just five blocks of calming? So it's not short of laying out five options for every street in town, but at, at least it starts to look at everything as a whole. Now, I don't know whether that's a good idea or not, but I would sure like to have a conversation with consultants as to whether or not that's a good idea. And not from the perspective of whether or not they have the time and money, but whether or not it's a good idea to, as a way to plan. And so what, we, did you have a comment?
Have we looked at the question from the perspective of knowing what the current priority corridor map looks like? And I've seen a number of different maps, but I'm not sure what's the current priority corridor map look like? And, and what are the deficiencies, things that we think are missing for the priority corridors as they're currently mapped? Or does that map need to be totally redone? I don't know.
Well, possibly, I think.
Be helpful to, to look at that map.
Well, does anybody? I don't want to.
I mean, that's, I feel like they, they brought that, that was part of what we looked at back in November, December too, was like defining what do we believe is priority corridor. And we looked at the multimodal corridor, its safeguards to schools as kind of like the core ones. But then we also wanted to learn future development and things like that, because we know that that will change what this map looks like. They did include that in the draft to a degree. And that's where they focused a lot of the projects on. And that's where I think they said, okay, here's your map that you wanted to prioritize. Here's the projects on that map. Network. And, and I don't think it works like that. I think to your point, it's like start with like track, like priority number one, traffic, you know, put these things in, in, in a layer like that. Um, might help adjust that to a degree, but you know, I think the priority corridor, it does, I mean, it's where I see most, most people app about. And I don't think they missed on that as part of this, but.
Well, they, they, there's a map of the priority quarters in, in the report.
Yeah.
And like you said, they did, they did say, well, some of the recommendations are on the priority corridors. That's one way to approach it, right? I, I mean, it's, it's not starting at the beginning and saying, should these be the priority orders? Why should these be the priority orders? How do we design priority quarters so they're truly equitable in terms of bikes, pets and cars? And
And so they get used as such as priority corridors.
Rather than just saying, you told me your priority quarters are, here's a couple of fixes that will make them a little better. Which is what I kind of, yeah, I think. So Kevin, you said you had, hey, David, David's left. You said you had a couple of things you thought. You said you had a couple of things you thought you wanted to say.
Just if, if we're, or if you guys are gonna go down the road doing the review thing. And then reconvening after you've all had a chance to dive into it. Um, a couple of things to think about. One of them's gonna be controversial. There are others, I don't think, what we. I would encourage you to take a look at. The comp plan to a certain degree, because that's really what defines our expectations of. Growth and redevelopment. For the town over the next 20 years. And so that might help inform some of those thoughts. And this, this is not me disagreeing with what you said, what we're, what would be really helpful for staff. Is some like really specific. Not. Not an I thought about this and here's a solution, but some very specific examples of some of these. Ideas that you had in this draft. Because a, a lot of them were like. I hear what you're saying, but I don't really understand what. What that looks like.
Well, that's kind of a problem we have too. I, I think, uh, it, it almost, we, we will try to do that. We need the dialogue. That's how these ideas get flushed out, but I understand.
You know, and just as a reminder, and Matt, you were there at that meeting. I think it was the one at the third street center. When the board had a brief mess during the budget process. They were very focused. Not completely focused, but they did want a list of projects that could be jumped. That was very clear direction from them, not at the exclusion of a long-term plan.
Right. That, that, yeah, I do recall that. Right. They did want. They, they, they didn't want a plan that's set on the shelf and they felt that having a project list would help that. Make it useful. And, and, uh. Just that it's out there. My response is, uh. It, it may give you some things to do, but it's not gonna help to get where you want to go. So.
It's just things to think about as people are reviewing.
No, I, I appreciate, it's a true comment, but I, I think it's, uh, it's, uh. It's, it's one that we as a commission need to, need to, need to address. Because there is a, a push and pull between let's just get something done and let's play, right? But, but yeah, let's see.
I mean, my, I'm fine with the project list as long as. It, those projects have some sort of tieback to what the goals are in a clearly defined manner. And that was kind of like, I. I almost see that in this draft. I, like, it's, it's getting there. I still think it is missing a good amount of. Most importantly, like future growth, cause I, maybe that's. Putting the two, the comp plan and this over one another to a degree will help. Better define that, but, but yeah, like. If, if these projects in this list. Can showcase that they will actually address those goals clearly stated. Then heck, like go for it, you know? That helps everybody, gets everybody moving and. Yeah, so.
Yeah, and it's another way to help us prioritize to make sure we're not just focusing only on one of the elements.
Yeah.
Right. Okay.
Throw in my last controversial one.
Yes. Oh, you have one? Sorry, yeah.
I know this is gonna rub people the wrong way, but you guys use the word growth a lot. And I would challenge you to think about whether you mean population growth. Or development and redevelopment, because I can tell you. Pretty. From my opinion, what I see. Having the utilities under public works. We are not going through a huge population growth. And we're going through development and redevelopment that isn't really adding a lot of people to the staff.
Yeah.
And so just, just.
That, that's a good heads up. Thank you. Yeah, I, I appreciate it.
Yeah, that's a good distinction between, not controversial.
No, no, that's, that's a good, that's a good, that's a good, good point.
I think from the conversations we had. Those of us who were at the map booth review last summer. Um, the concerns were primarily about development and physical growth, not population. You know, and just if it was a lack of infrastructure that went along with that physical growth.
Yeah.
Crowding out, you know, so there was more traffic and we didn't, you know, we do, we were ahead of ourselves. And not planning for this, these issues. And the other thing, if, if you could, I'm not clear. The document that we brought to the table today was a conversation starter. It wasn't meant to be defined. It's just. These are the issues we're concerned about. Let's talk about these. Could you give me an example of something that we were, it's just so vague, you can't quite figure out.
I think while you. Kevin, while you're looking, there's something there to that point of development or redevelopment. One thing I think of is what are we developing for? Like if I look at the city market, it's developed for cars, not pedestrians. And that's kind of. How does that fit into this? Um, and, and that, that I think is what. A little intersection improvement here and there might not address what might develop back here. So.
But, and those kinds of comments will be very helpful to staff and the consultants as we move forward in that, cause. But I, I don't disagree.
Yeah.
By the same token, how do you talk about growth without population growth? Everybody is saying, well, we need, we need better housing. Is housing not going, better housing within this community not going to lead it to an increase in population? An increase in vehicles, an increase in traffic? Or is it just not that significant? Um, how, what is gonna be the impact? On the community of whatever kind of development you're talking about that. That means population the only, the only issue? Or are there going to be, is there gonna be more traffic? Is there gonna be more truck traffic? It's gonna be commercial traffic or is it gonna be? You know, uh, community, community residential traffic. Uh, what, what are gonna be the impacts of the kind of growth? That you foresee is going to occur? If it's not gonna be population expansion.
I don't know if that's fully laid out on the comp plan, but I do think it touches on kind of those directions to a degree.
Um, does it answer the question that's relevant to this?
I wanna say it's, that, nothing's ever a hundred percent.
Kevin, you were looking for an example.
So, um. Create a platform that allows the town to consider and process change. I, just if, like, comments like that, if it was just, yeah, what, what does that mean? Cause I think we have. I, I think we have the ability to work on that if we can just better understand what that. So again, just thinking about it and. The more specificity is you guys work through this and comment on it, the better it's going to be.
Okay. You guys, any of you three, after listening to our discussion, have anything to say?
No, I'm, 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 uh, new to your process. The goal.
It's always nice to, you know, make sure we're, we're not working in a bubble, right? So.
No, I, I started on reading your plan, I think.
Okay.
And my comment would just be what you guys are doing is hard. And so don't get discouraged because I, I don't, don't throw up your hands. And say, well, let's just go with all the stuff we have on the shelf and, but, you know, improve a couple of intersections. Cause I think that would be. And I, I think the whole town would suffer from that. So I think you're, 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 you're heading in the right direction and I just. Applaud your efforts to, to, um, and, and I, and I think. Matt, you made a really good call in terms of saying, we need to pull back from this. We need to reexamine some of this stuff individually and then come back collectively and.
Yeah.
Thrash through some of it, you know, it's, it's complicated, it's messy, but I, I really applaud the effort. And encourage you to keep on.
Yeah, thank you for. Putting that out to us. And you encourage us. Okay, you know, I think, uh, you know, look, look at this has actually been a good first meeting, right? We, plus we have some ideas, we've, um. Got some good advice and feedback and, um. I, I think, uh, we just need to appreciate how. Important this is, I think, for the town. I've been on the commission seven or eight years and. This is by far the biggest thing and the most important thing to the future of transportation in this town that we've dealt with. Um, you know, I think we've dealt with comp plans and comp plan updates and. I, I, I believe anyway that, uh, the call for a transit plan that came out of the comp plan update. Was to sort of take all of this talk to the next level so we could. Really look into the future and understand what, why and how we're doing things. So, um. Let's just take a step back, let's, um, reconvene. Uh, maybe later in May or maybe at the June meeting since, you know. We have time and, uh, and reload on, on review of the things we've put together over the last six months and, and. And come back and, and have another conversation. And, and I think as Bill pointed out, it's a process. We gotta stick to it and. You know, we, we, we'll work for an hour, we'll go back and we'll, next hour will be more productive than this. So. Okay.
Would it be useful for people? I like how, how you played this out and I think it's a great start of like kind of going section by section. Through the plan as well. Would it be helpful to turn it into a Google document so that we can all make little comments? And like have a little bit of dialogue on that document itself.
If everybody feels comfortable that, everybody can edit a single document all at once.
Uh, I, I think so, yeah. I, I, I think, um. Yeah, you know, uh.
Word. I was kind of trying to save time and extra meetings on a, a document. What if we all promise to work on that document at different times of day?
You know, I, I think.
If, if it's okay, like if I can work as like, okay, like if people make comments, I can try to put them all into a single one.
Uh, or we, if Rick wants to keep that, Rick's taken it so far. If you wanna continue to field comments. Why don't we do that? Why, why don't we?
Workaround?
It will be a workaround if your comments are to Rick and not the entire commission.
So if you have. You know, I'll follow this up in an email just so everybody will see the decision, but. Uh, and what it's supposed to accomplish. I think we want everybody to. Think through the RFP that this commission put forth and was approved to send out. We wanna look at that in the context of the draft report we got. And then I think, uh. Lastly, look at this outline. I, I think this outline draws from. The RFP and the conversations we've had over the last six or seven months. But, um. I, I don't want that to be driving individual opinions and thought, right? If that drives everybody's thought, then we, we lose your perspective and, and it's important that we get that. Okay. All right, everybody. Thank you. Meeting adjourned. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks. I was reading the document. Earlier today. Thought that I forwarded it to myself, so, so I wouldn't have to dig back through all the emails to find it. I sat down this evening, when I sat down this evening, I could feel like I can't remember.
So you might send it again. Oh, send it again.
You, you want me to send out the most convergent of the priority quarters tattoo? I mean, it, it is saying it's the one in there, but it's.
Their pictures are so tiny. Me to visualize it, but exactly, is it show? Shows all the apartments or is it? It seemed like their comments were, they had highlighted specific areas for different, different representations.
There is a map in that report and you may have to zoom in on it, but it talks about the priority corridors. nighttime priority corridors are different colors. I don't think so.
Yeah.
No.
I can. I know you have a bigger graphic, right?
And also tell you a page on it.